Good morning, I would like to welcome you to the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 9:00 AM Tuesday, June 1st, 2010. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask for an acceptance of the agenda.
Have a motion.
Have a motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. The first item of business this morning is Dr. William Bergen, who has requested to appear before the Board of Commissioners. And, Dr. Bergen, if you'd like to step forward, please, and at either of the mics. Good morning.
Good morning, and thank you very much Chairman Mathis, Commissioners, citizens of Henry County. Thank you very much for allowing me to address you this morning. My name is Dr. William Bergen. I'm a general surgeon in Henry County and have been so for the past nineteen years. I have maintained an office and an active surgical practice in Henry County continuously since July 1st, 1991. I'm licensed to practice medicine in the state of Georgia. I'm board certified and recertified by the American Board of Surgery, and I'm a fellow of the American College of Surgeons. I've been on staff at Henry Medical Center since July 1st, 1991, and have held numerous elected staff leadership positions, including Chief of Surgery, Chief of Staff, and member of the Henry Medical Center Board of Directors. I'm accompanied today either in person or through their signatures on these petitions by a large constituency of very disturbed physicians who are a representative sample of the medical staff of Henry Medical Center and the Henry County medical community. Included on this list of signatures are general surgeons, internists, cardiologists, pulmonologists, infectious disease specialists, family practitioners, oncologists, gastroenterologists, orthopedic surgeons, and nephrologists, to name a few. Represented here are the largest, most successful, and most prominent physician groups and practices in their respective specialties. These physicians represent the bulk of the admissions and consultations performed at Henry Medical Center and provide the preponderance of the health care to the people of Henry County and its surrounding neighborhoods. I would also like to note that some of these very important and busy physicians even disrupted and restructured their entire schedules and put their office patients and surgery schedules on hold today, something that takes a great deal of time, effort, and resources in order to attend this Tuesday morning meeting. I state this owing to emphasize the level of priority these important professionals are placing on the matters I'm here to discuss today. These physicians are extremely concerned about a series of events that have been taking place outside of the awareness and control of the physicians, the Board of Commissioners, our patients, and the taxpaying citizens of Henry County. As you may have recently read, Henry Medical Center has recently begun the process of considering an alliance with Piedmont Healthcare. The terms of this arrangement, be it a management contract, a loose affiliation, a partnership, a joint venture, or an outright purchase, remain a mystery not only to the citizens of Henry County, but to the Board of Commissioners, who have generously supported the hospital with over $119 million of taxpayer money over the past ten years, but also to the physicians of Henry County and its surrounding neighborhoods, who have been the lifeblood of this medical community and this hospital for over thirty years. In addition to being conducted on a secretive basis, these negotiations have taken place without any significant input from the physicians or the taxpaying citizens who support the hospital with their money and their lives, and without due consideration to any and all other available options. The physicians of Henry County have asked the hospital administration and board repeatedly to be engaged in the process of determining the destiny of Henry Medical Center and have been repeatedly refused access to the process or the information needed to assist in formulating an appropriate decision. For these reasons, a petition has been circulated among concerned physicians of Henry County. This petition has been signed by and endorsed by a large constituency of physicians covering a wide spectrum of specialties and practices. Represented are the largest and most prominent physician groups in the county and in the city of Atlanta, numerous former hospital department chairman, numerous former chiefs of staff, numerous former hospital board members, and former hospital chairman of the board. Together, this group of representative physicians constitute the overwhelming majority of all admissions and consultations at Henry Medical Center. The following is the text of a letter that has been circulated and signed by this large and important group of physicians, objecting to the method by which Henry Medical Center has attempted to expedite this matter without the proper input from the people who have the most at stake in the outcome of this project, namely the physicians, the patients, and taxpaying citizens of Henry County, who have struggled so long to build and maintain our hospital, and I emphasize "our" hospital. We encourage you, the Board of Commissioners, who we elected into office, to look after our best interests, and the citizens of Henry County who may be listening to this right now, to take whatever steps you feel are necessary to voice your opinions that the future of Henry Medical Center and Henry County are too important to be left in the hands of only a few self-appointed individuals who are not properly equipped to make such an important decision by themselves. I'd like to read verbatim, so there's no misquotation, the text of the letter that was signed by over sixty top physicians at Henry Medical Center. Dear members of the Board and administration of Henry Medical Center and Henry County Board of Commissioners, we, the members of the medical staff, have and continue to work for the success of Henry Medical Center. We know that Henry Medical Center has been under significant financial pressure due to the change in the landscape of health care and reimbursement pressures impacting the bottom line. The future of Henry Medical Center and its medical staff are directly linked. Members of the medical staff are extremely concerned about the implication of significant changes in the hospital's future. The medical staff has worked tirelessly in the growth of Henry Medical Center and recognizes the importance of their input into decisions made by administration about the future of Henry Medical Center. We strongly urge the administration and board to consider adequate input from members of the medical staff and the appropriate representatives of the general community served by Henry Medical Center before a decision is made. Of the possible courses of action to be taken, affiliation with another health care system is one choice, as is outright sale of the hospital or continuing its present independent status with appropriate changes implemented to correct its financial difficulties. Of the choices available for possible affiliation, the two major medical systems in the Atlanta area, Emory University and Piedmont Health Systems, are two to consider. Of these two, careful examination of the relative strengths and weaknesses of an affiliation needs to be examined. A big part of this examination would require the input provided by the medical staff that have worked with and have experience with both groups. It is critical, based on the prior effort and contributions of the medical staff and community, that this should be a transparent decision-making process that engages and involves a wide representation of the Henry Medical Center medical staff and appropriate community members. No choices should be arbitrarily excluded. Recently, a delegate group of the medical staff requested the administration of Henry Medical Center to be allowed to participate in the ongoing proceedings, but this request was denied. The success of Henry Medical Center is dependent on many factors, not the least of which is the cooperation and efforts of its medical staff and involvement of the physicians who have been loyal and committed to Henry Medical Center and the community it serves. A large number of us have supported this hospital from its inception and have helped in its growth. We feel no less committed to its future and therefore request to have a place in the decision-making process, respectfully submitted by concerned physicians of Henry Medical I would like to conclude my time with you this morning by telling you a story about a very memorable patient. After curing her of cancer once, she presented to me with a second cancer, completely unrelated to the first. With this second cancer, we were not as lucky as we were with the first. It was more advanced, more widely spread, and the likelihood of her survival was very small. Be that as it may, we agreed to attempt a very large, very dangerous operation in an attempt to give her not a second, but a third chance at life. The surgery went perfectly. I've never done a procedure that complicated with that degree of accuracy and skill. The anesthesia care was perfect. The immediate post-operative care in the recovery room was perfect. The nursing care was perfect. But then something unexpected happened. For no apparent reason, her blood pressure dropped, her vital signs became unstable, and she slipped into a coma. Her course in the intensive care unit was very rocky. She developed every post-operative complication I've ever heard of and some that I never even knew existed. I've never in twenty-four years of my surgical career seen a patient that sick ever survive. There was no reason that she should have survived. She was older, frail, had already been given a second chance at life by beating cancer once, and had undergone a very complicated operation against a tough disease that had every reason and opportunity to kill her. But she had something on her side, the dedication, caring, and compassion of the people you see sitting behind me and whose names appear on these petitions. It took a very concerted effort of many people with different areas of knowledge and expertise to give this patient another chance at life. Doctors and nurses who sat with her around the clock, knew when to fight and when not to give in. Sometimes we all agreed on what needed to be done, the answer was clear, but sometimes we disagreed because what would have helped one problem might have worsened another. We did it each other's input and help. None of us could have done it alone. Just when things couldn't get worse, she started to stabilize. Then she started showing some signs of improvement. Then she began waking up and showing even more signs of continued improvement. She eventually went on to make a complete recovery, and to this day, she's a happy, healthy, productive member of our community. The only reason this happened is because everything that had to be done was done, right on cue, right on time, in a proper order, with no mistakes, completely open, with honesty, integrity, humility, and with complete transparency. We had one chance to get it right, and we did it right. Now, how does all this relate to the issue at hand? It does so in many ways. It demonstrates how no important decision can be made without the educated input of all involved parties. When something is this important, nothing else gets in your way of doing the right thing. Maybe we were lucky. Maybe we were blessed with a miracle. Maybe we were a little bit better that day than we should have been. Either way, by working together and communicating effectively, we made the difference between life and death, between success and failure. It was doctors, nurses, physicians assistants, and therapists that made the difference, not executives, administrators, lawyers, or businessmen. We know what we're doing, and more importantly, we know what we need in order to keep doing it well. As with the issue of the serious struggles with Henry Medical Center, it most of all goes to show that we only have one chance to get this right. If we fail now, there's no coming back, no mulligans, no do-overs. We cannot afford a single mistake to be made with regard to the future direction of Henry Medical Center. Why did I tell this story? I wanted everyone listening to my voice to remember why Henry Medical Center is here. It's not about millage rates or bond issues. It's not about retirement pensions, year-end bonuses, or legislation. It's here for the people of Henry County and our neighbors, in order to keep them healthy and happy and their lives productive. Not only have these physicians dedicated their careers to that pursuit, but trust me, they've dedicated their lives to that endeavor. We care about one thing and one thing only. We care about the viability and longevity of Henry Medical Center, so that we have a place to make miracles like this occur. We can only ensure that if we can be an integral part of determining Henry Medical Center's destiny. On behalf of the constituency of prominent physicians of which I speak, I request that this body demand an immediate halt to any and all activities concerning any affiliation, joint venture, merger, or transfer of ownership of Henry Medical Center with any other body until a thorough, transparent process of due diligence can be conducted, which includes the complete involvement, engagement, input, support, and representation of the physicians of Henry Medical Center, the Board of Commissioners, and the citizens of Henry County. And I thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you, Dr. Bergen. I had a couple of questions for you, if I could, please, and other board members may as well. I know you had mentioned that you had a petition that's been signed by over seventy physicians, and I'm assuming that we can have a copy of that.
Yes, ma'am.
Have you presented, and you said you have presented this to the Board of Henry Medical Center for their consideration?
Assign copies of the petition have been submitted to the Board members of Henry Medical Center, and that's just been at the end of last week, so I don't know that there's been any follow-up from that yet.
My other question, and I probably speak for the citizens as well, because most of us don't know how a hospital operates. We just hope that it operates correctly when we have a need for it. When you talk about staffing, and you talk about the majority of patients that are at Henry Medical Center, the seventy physicians that you referenced on that petition, I am assuming that you have the ability to send your patients to any hospital that you have a relationship with in the metro area, is that correct?
That is correct, yes, ma'am.
So what would happen if those seventy physicians on that petition decided that they no longer wanted to use Henry Medical and they sent their patients to another hospital? What would that, how would that impact Henry Medical Center?
Well, that's a hard question. I can't imagine something that drastic happening, but if these physicians, and it's between sixty and seventy, so I just want to be exact about that, I don't have the exact number, but if every one of these physicians pulled all their patients from Henry Medical Center, there wouldn't be a hospital. In three days, it would close. They would have, they wouldn't have business, period.
Okay. Any board member have a question or a comment?
How many physicians are on staff at Henry Medical Center?
There are somewhere between three and four hundred physicians on staff. Out of those three or four hundred, probably a hundred and fifty or two hundred haven't seen the inside of the hospital in two years. Those are courtesy staff members who are affiliated with the hospital due to either a partnership and arrangement with other physicians that are on staff. Out of the hundred, or a hundred and fifty that are active staff, probably sixty or seventy provide seventy or eighty percent of the care in that hospital. So what I was trying to explain is that this sixty or seventy physicians, while it's only a third of the actual medical staff, it's a representation of probably seventy, eighty percent of all the work done at Henry. Some of the physician's signatures are from physicians who are a part of a large group of physicians, and with the timeframe that we were on, we were not able to knock on doors and get every single physician, so we would get one or two physicians from a larger group to represent them.
But it is a significant representation of the entire staff.
Absolutely. And I've got the names of the physicians, and as you can see here, that's at least twenty, maybe twenty-five names of groups, and each of these groups may have anywhere from two to twelve physicians in it, but these are all the groups that are represented. ENT groups, orthopedic groups, urology groups, pulmonary groups, internal medicine groups, family practice groups, all the way up the list, as I mentioned in my notes earlier.
Anyone else? So basically, all you're asking is that the physicians who have spent many years supporting the hospital and that are continuing to support the hospital have an opportunity to participate in the process? That's all you're asking for?
Well, we think that anytime you only bring one player to the negotiating table, you don't really have much to negotiate with. You either have to take their deal or leave it. And if you don't listen to all offers, how do you know what other people are willing to help you with? So yes, to answer your question, we believe that as active members of the medical staff, these doctors want a part of it. They want to participate in the process. We don't have a preference one way or the other, who comes in and who helps. What we do want is for the right entity to do it, and the right entity can only be determined by listening to everybody's offer, taking the consideration of not only the administration of the hospital and the board, but the physicians, the Board of Commissioners who support the hospital, and the citizens of Henry County who need this hospital to exist so that they can continue to exist.
And I'm assuming that many of the physicians listed there also reside in Henry County and are taxpayers as well?
Including myself.
Okay. Anybody else?
Madam Chair, there are also some other doctors here. Would they like to be recognized too?
Would you like to?
I have Dr. Barry Dix, Dr. Kay Matthew, and Dr. Gus Escalera, cardiologists with Southern Heart Specialists and a surgeon with Surgery South, B.C. We had many other people who were scheduled to come, but we rearranged the meeting at the last minute, and being nine o'clock on Tuesday morning after a holiday weekend, we had a difficult time communicating with everybody to get here, but we had at least a dozen physicians that were scheduled to show originally, but last-minute change of schedule, we had a little bit more difficulty. But again, that's why I bring you physicians represented by signature on petitions. And again, I read the petition, so I wasn't paraphrasing or misquoting. I wanted you to know exactly what these physicians signed.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. If you could leave a copy of that petition with our clerk so that we can have copies...
I can leave a copy of the petition. If you'd like me to leave copies of all the signatures, I will, but I'd need a chance to make Xerox copies, and I'll be happy to do that and bring them, make six copies for you, and bring them by later this morning.
Our clerk can make a copy of that for you.
Okay.
And that would be this lady here on the end. Thank you so much, Dr. Bergen. We appreciate you being here this morning. And if there are no further questions from the board, we'll just move forward in the agenda. All right, we're going to move on to Technology Services. The first item is a resolution requesting approval of a revenue-sharing agreement with Open Portal Solutions for online payment for accident reports. Our presenter is Clark Rayner, Technology Services Director, and Major Danny Butler, Police Department, and that's going to be exhibit number one. Good morning.
Good morning. Back in January of 2010, this year, the State Department of Transportation entered into a contract with a company called Open Portal Solutions to provide electronic accident reporting to the state in automated fashion, which actually originates in the field, in the police cars, with a program called G.I.R.S., which is Georgia Electronic Accident Reporting System. It's just a tailored name for the state of Georgia, and it's a state contract that affects literally every law enforcement agency in the state that provides accident reporting. Today, accident reports are provided basically in an over-the-counter method only. That is, that you cannot go online and purchase an accident report or obtain one in that fashion. So all accident reports are basically done at the counter, and whatever, I'm not sure exactly what the fee structure is today. Typically, it's about five dollars for non-residents. I think that may be under consideration. However, the way that this is structured is that anyone receiving an accident report online would pay a five-dollar convenience fee, in addition to any fee that the police department traditionally charges for that type of report. Open Portal Solutions would keep five dollars of the convenience fee, providing the online capability of obtaining that accident report, and then would then write a check back to the county for the county's normal portion that we would receive anyway. And I can show you just a brief overview of kind of what the interface looks like. Part of the agreement also includes the officer at the scene would fill out one of these cards, which is basically filled out with the date, time, the last name of the person involved in the accident report, and also the accident report number. And that's some of the information that an individual would need to actually go online to be able to obtain that report, and that is, that's part of the security that's built into the system, just so that anyone just can't go out there and obtain accident reports when they're not personally involved with that. Henry County's not alone in this. This is a current listing that I'm showing on the screen now of all the agencies that are involved with the system. It actually takes a lot of workload off of our officers and our clerical staff there at the Police Department. It actually, it's a computer, it's a wizard, if you're familiar with what that is, that actually in the G.I.R.S. program that the officers actually walk through to develop the crash report. It then actually puts that report on a template that looks and feels just like a traditional report does, but this is a list of all the different agencies throughout the state that are currently either using the system or have been set up to use the system. Henry County has been, has had this set up, been training with the system and using it in a pilot program since, I believe, the second week of March. But we've actually gone through all the testing and compliance portion of the program, and we feel comfortable now to go ahead and accept this and begin using it, and thus enabling our citizens to have the option of obtaining these accident reports online, and that supplies for not only our own citizens, but anyone that's involved with an accident report. I'd be happy to take any questions.
City board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? All right, if not, you have before you a resolution to approve and authorize the chairman to execute the associated documents for revenue-sharing agreement between Henry County, Georgia, and Open Portal Solutions of Greenwood, Indiana, for online accident reports. I'll entertain a motion.
Please, approve, ma'am.
Have a motion to approve by Mr. Holder.
Yes.
Second by Mr. Roark. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Clark. Moving on to public safety, the first item is a resolution requesting authorization to use seized asset forfeiture funds to purchase SWAT team entry vests with protective rifle plates. Our presenter is Lieutenant Jeff Maddox of the Police Department, thus exhibit number two. Good morning.
Good morning, and thank you. I'll be brief this morning. We have twenty-six current members on the Henry County SWAT team. Each member is vital, they have a vest. Each member does currently have a vest, but all the vests were ordered five years ago, and they've reached their five-year expiration, so we need to purchase new vests so that all the members have a current vest that is not expired. Also, we're asking for the rifle plates to accompany the vest. This is, I guess, an additional purchase outside of just the vest. Here, locally and nationally, we've seen an increase in the use of rifles, whether it be like a deer rifle, AK-47s, or other assault rifles like that. These rifle plates provide an additional frontal protection that goes inside the vest. It just slides down in there, and it will protect the officer's vital organs in the event that they are assaulted with a rifle, a rifle strike to the center mass. Hopefully, the board will approve this. Some, just quick, California, in March of 2009, they lost four officers at once due to rifle fire from a suspect. Just prior to that, in Pennsylvania, they lost two additional officers as well. Actually, it was four, two SWAT officers where they were trying to go on a domestic, man had barricaded, used AK-47, shot two officers from a window. So hopefully, we can move to purchase the vest with the narcotic seize funds, and if we purchase the vest and the plates, I hope this will give the additional protection for our SWAT operators when they're doing their missions here in Henry County.
I have just a couple of questions. One is just out of curiosity. I know several years back, when vests were really starting to be utilized by departments, they had a metal plate that fits pretty much over your heart area, and I know that after a few years, they stopped using those plates because of the bullets deflecting off and then going up and hitting the officers around the throat and the face area, and so they started manufacturing vests without the metal plates. Are these plates different than those, or, I mean, have they improved, and what has changed over the last few years?
Yes, ma'am, you're correct. They did make metal plates to start with, and what they were finding was is the handgun round... rounds were striking the plates, and sometimes they were shooting up into the officer's chin. They've redesigned them. They made them out of Kevlar, but they've made them out of a different kind of Kevlar. Apparently, this is what the vest... I'm going to try to speak on behalf of them, sort of. I don't know much about the internal workings of how it's made, but it's harder. It's Kevlar coated, so it absorbs the round, but it also prevents rifle rounds from going through that. A rifle round would actually penetrate a vest without the rifle round, without a plate in the front of it. A regular vest that the officers wear on the street, and the vest we have right now, if they were to take a hit from a rifle round, because of the way it's made, it's pointy, it'll go right through. It's not resistant to those. It's resistant to like .357, .40 caliber. That's what the vest is designed for, to stop. But this day and age, bad guys and suspects have went away from just handguns. They're going to rifles now because they know that our vest won't stop rifle rounds. So this is something that you can get them for front and back, the plates, and you can get them for the sides. We're just asking for the front plate to help protect the vital organs of the officer in front, because hopefully, going forward, if they get struck in the front, which is normally, I read a lot of articles on officers being killed by rifle rounds, and most of them are all struck in the front. So hopefully, that plate will help that.
And to absorb and not deflect.
Right. It absorbs and it takes in the impact.
Also noticed in here that Command Uniform is the only one referenced. Is that a sole source provider for this particular vest?
They have done the past orders, and they are the ones that carry the vest that we're looking for. And that is, the quote in the request is that it was actually done through them. I didn't do that part. I did the part about... I'm sorry, I don't know if that's the only vendor. I just know that when it was presented to me to write this up, that that's who apparently carries the vest that we want, and it has what we're looking for. And I guess that's who we ordered from in the past that carries the best price, and that's how we got that.
Okay. Was that part of the contract? I know initially, we approved a contract to purchase certain supplies, and there was a list of things that were on that list that we could get from Command. I think that maybe we split to another vendor for some other items as well, were the vest on that particular vendor list?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. And Command Uniform provides the everyday vest for the officers on the road, and they also represent multiple holdings, who represents about 16 different vest companies. And this particular vest is a SWAT vest, and our best purchase is a state contract via Drive, Home, Command Uniform, and we're getting the best price.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Did anyone else have a question or comment? If not, you have a resolution before you authorizing the use of $60,169.20 from the seize asset and forfeiture account for the purchase of SWAT team entry vests, and I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Staney?
Second.
Second by Mr. Holder? All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good morning.
The next item is a resolution requesting award of a bid to purchase and install emergency lights, sirens, and miscellaneous accessories for police patrol vehicles. Our presenter is Major Danny Butler, and that's going to be exhibit number three. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. This request is for the award of a bid to purchase and install emergency lights, sirens, and miscellaneous accessories in the 18 patrol vehicles that was authorized by the board for the department to purchase. But in your paperwork you have in front of you there, it's for 18 vehicles. We'd like to amend that and make four of the vehicles a heat cars, and change that to 14 vehicles for this resolution, and change the price on the bottom from $64,827 to $50,421 that we're requesting at this time for this equipment.
City Board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? Not you have a resolution before you with the changes... Madam Clerk, do you have those changes that were referenced? And I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve, Madam Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Bowman?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bazler? All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Let's see, Major Butler, you have the next item, which is a resolution requesting award of a bid to purchase and install in-car video systems for police patrol vehicles, and that's going to be exhibit number four.
Yes, ma'am. This request is for the award of a bid to purchase from different vendors that submitted bid to install the in-car camera system for the police vehicles that was purchased on the aforementioned resolution. I believe Wes Chatham Warning Devices is the company that we're recommending for the award.
Assuming the amount of $80,100?
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions or comments related to this item?
Madam Chairman, one time, ma'am.
Which counties is coming out, Mike?
This will come out of a capital fund for the cars. The cars and all the equipment that goes with the cars will be purchased.
It was a budgeted items, correct? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I'd like to have my motion approved.
You have a motion to approve by Mr. Staney? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Holder? All in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a resolution requesting authorization for Henry County Animal Control to offer the purchase of permanent electronic identification, microchipping for pets adopted or reclaimed from the Henry County Animal Shelter. Our presenter is Ms. Jerry Yoder, Director of Animal Care and Control, exhibit number six. Good morning.
Good morning. Microchipping is rapidly becoming the worldwide industry standard for pet identification. We see a lot at the shelter, pet collars come off, tags come off collars, but an implanted microchip remains with that pet no matter where that pet goes. Currently, every pet that comes into our shelter is scanned for a microchip. Each of our animal control officers carries a microchip scanner in their vehicle. Each of our kennel masters carries a microchip scanner in the shelter, and there are also scanners at our reception counter to scan stray pets that are brought to the shelter by citizens. Being able to quickly identify a pet's owner increases the number of stray and lost pets reclaimed from the shelter, as well as decreases costs incurred by the county for holding and maintaining these animals. The unique microchip identification of pets provides irrefutable proof of ownership to hold owners responsible for the actions of their pets. And in the interest of public safety, microchipping of dogs declared to be dangerous or potentially dangerous, as defined by Georgia state law and Henry County ordinance, identifies and provides consistent tracking of dogs deemed a threat to the public. Implantation of microchips under the skin of a pet is quick, it's easy, it doesn't require a veterinarian, and it presents no health risk to the pet. These are the microchips that we are proposing using. They're from a company called 24 Pet Watch. The chips are pre-registered, meaning that the cost of registering the chip with the 24-hour Pet Watch company is included in the purchase price of the chip. 24 Pet Watch's recovery services are available free of charge 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, via both the telephone and the internet. The Animal Care and Control Department is asking your approval to implant pre-registered microchips in all pets that are adopted from the shelter, to offer the voluntary implantation of pre-registered microchips in pets reclaimed from the shelter by their owners at a cost of $20 per animal, and mandatory microchipping of all dogs declared dangerous or potentially dangerous at a cost of $20 per dog.
City Board member have a question or comment in reference to the microchipping? I think one reference to that we took these out of order. Exhibit number six is the first one, and then we're going to back up to number five after this presentation.
So ultimately, the pet owner will pay for all of this?
Correct. The cost for implanting microchips in animals that are adopted from the shelter would be included in the adoption fee.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have a resolution before you authorizing the Henry County Animal Shelter to offer the purchase of permanent electronic identification. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve, Madam Chairman.
Have a motion by Mr. Holder?
Second.
Second by Mr. Roark? All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Now, backing up to exhibit number five, we have a resolution requesting authorization for Henry County Animal Control to levy certain fees and fines for animals adopted and reclaimed from the Henry County Animal Shelter.
In order to streamline the efficiency of the Animal Care and Control Department, to add additional services for the public, as well as to decrease the number of animals that are found repeatedly at large in our county, the Animal Care and Control Department is requesting a modification of fees currently charged at the shelter to the following: An adoption fee of $65 for both dogs and cats to include the pre-registered microchip and a prepaid rabies vaccination voucher. A reclamation fee of $30 to increase in $30 increments for each impound of the same animal or impound of animals from the same owner within a 12-month period. A rabies vaccination voucher fee of $15 for reclaimed animals when an owner cannot provide proof of an animal having received a current rabies vaccination, which is required by our state law and county ordinance. And finally, a euthanasia fee of $30 for owners wishing to have their personal pets euthanized for reasons of temperament or health.
Jerry, are these fees in line pretty much with other counties?
We did an extensive survey of all the metro Atlanta counties, and they are very much in line with what other counties are currently charging.
And on the impound fees, that's basically saying that the first time we impound your pet is $30, but we're going to increase that cost every time the owner fails to...
Correct.
...keep its animal contained properly.
Our current impound fee is $30, and we are seeing an increasing number of animals that we're re-impounding two, three, four, five times. They're paying that same $30 coming and picking up their animals. So we're hoping by having that fee double each time, that's an added incentive for those owners to keep their animals restrained.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have a resolution before you authorizing the Henry County Animal Care and Control Department to levy certain fees and fines for animals adopted and reclaimed from the Henry County Animal Shelter. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Have a motion by Mr. Roark? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Holder? All in favor? Motion carries five zero. All right, and the final item is going to be a public hearing, a dangerous dog classification appeal requested by Mr. Kevin Johnson, a resident at 336 Lingo Port Drive, McDonough. That's going to be exhibit number seven.
I'm not sure Mr. Johnson is here this morning. On March 30th of this year, an American Bulldog named Rock, who was owned by Mr. Johnson, bit Mr. Johnson's older daughter, Kyler. Kyler's 16-years-old. Kyler was playing with the dog. It was an in-home bite. There was some question as to whether or not it could be considered provoked. The dog was current on its rabies vaccine. The injuries that Kyler, that were a result of the bite, were not significant. And at that point, after the 10-day quarantine of Mr. Johnson's dog, we opted not to pursue additional dangerous or potentially dangerous charges. Part of the reason we did this was because Mr. Johnson, who lives on Lingo Port Drive, also has a second residence in Louisiana. At that point, he stated his intent to remove the dog from Henry County and relocate it permanently in New Orleans. However, on April 16th, Mr. Johnson's dog was still in Henry County, and his 13-year-old daughter, Carrington, was exiting her mother's bedroom. Carrington walked past the dog and was attacked. She received bites to her right arm and her right knee. When Mrs. Johnson came to her daughter's aid, the dog then turned on Mrs. Johnson. She sustained serious injuries. I believe you have photographs of the injuries in your packet, injuries that are consistent with what the state classifies as a serious injury. It required over 15 stitches to close. Miss Johnson, the child barricaded herself in the bedroom. Mrs. Johnson exited the residence. Our animal control officers had to go in and remove the dog from the residence to allow EMS and fire department personnel to go in and care for the victims. Mrs. Johnson, at that time, signed ownership of the dog over to Animal Control. Mr. Johnson almost immediately contacted the Animal Control Department, quite upset that his wife had signed the dog over, and was very emphatic that he intended to reclaim the dog post-quarantine. I advised Mr. Johnson on April 16th that I did intend to classify his dog as a dangerous dog. And on April 20th, I mailed Mr. Johnson via regular mail, certified mail, to both his residences, the required letter letting him know that his dog was being classified. On May 4th, Mr. Johnson responded and said that he was going to appeal the decision. On April 28th, we let Mr. Johnson know, because he had not reclaimed his dog from the shelter, that we would continue to hold it until Monday, May 10th. Mr. Johnson was able to get the needed $100,000 liability insurance necessary to reclaim his dog. He did come to the shelter on May 7th and reclaimed the dog, and stated then his intent to permanently relocate the dog to Louisiana. We have checked the residence since this date, and the dog is no longer in Henry County. However, we felt like in the interest of public safety, that because this dog was not mandated to leave the state, he had brought the dog back the second time after it bit the first time, that we classify this dog as dangerous to protect the public.
On the liability insurance, will they notify you if that insurance policy is dropped?
Not traditionally. We keep a file in the shelter of all dogs that are classified dangerous and potentially dangerous, and we will continually contact that insurance company. I did contact Jefferson Parish Animal Control, which is the parish where Mr. Johnson's second residence is, to alert them that this dog was coming into their community as well.
Is there anyone here? I'm assuming Mr. Johnson is not here. Does he have a representative here to speak on his behalf this morning? All right, I think that apparently he recognizes how ridiculous it is to come and appeal something like this. But does any board member have a comment or question pertaining to this item?
I'm just curious, in fact.
Do we know for sure that he took the dog to Louisiana the first time? Because the timeline's pretty tight here. I wondered if he just told you guys that and then left it here all along.
He stated that he did take it to Louisiana, but then returned it at the request of his wife.
Well, we just have his word for that.
Yes.
Madam Chairman, since this is an appeal hearing that Mr. Johnson himself has requested, and he's not here, I would ask Ms. Yoder to, for the record, explain the efforts to notify him of the hearing, so that the board can be aware that he was properly notified.
Mr. Johnson was notified via certified mail, regular mail, and a personal telephone call to let him know the date and time of today's hearing. So based on the evidence, I am requesting a motion to either uphold or deny the dangerous dog classification rendered by me on April 20th. It's my recommendation that the decision should be upheld.
Mr. Bazler?
Ms. Yoder, was the paramedics called out to this house more than one time?
The original bite, the paramedics were not called out. On the second bite, they were called out. And they couldn't, because of the aggression of the dog, could not enter the residence until the officers went in and removed the dog from the residence.
Yes, ma'am. I've read some of the statements. On the chips that we just spoke about, I mean, from this moment on, this dog would have had a chip in it.
Correct.
Correct.
And that way, that dog would be able to be tracked no matter where he is. If he ends up in someone else's community, a quick scan of that dog would notify that Animal Control that this dog has been declared dangerous in another state or another county.
Yes, ma'am. I saw.
Anyone else?
The purpose of this entire hearing is to appeal your decision to the board. Is that not correct?
Yes, sir.
To either uphold the decision you made or to overturn your decision.
Correct.
If no other comments or questions are forthcoming, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chairman, I will move to uphold the decision of Animal Control and Ms. Yoder.
Okay, we have a motion to uphold and a second by Mr. Bowman. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Have a good day.
Ms. Yoder? Ms. Farah? I had a call here, I guess it's been about two weeks ago, on some of the service that y'all provide. And it was, as you know, we've had another little incident that was, that somehow I got brought into it. But it's all worked out, and I'd like to thank you for what you do. I know so many times it goes, maybe unnoticed, or, but you know as well, I've made trips to your facility, and I believe y'all do an outstanding job. And I'd just like to publicly thank you for what you do. Because when we hear comments, they're not always positive, but at the end of the day, I think that we're able to swim in the right direction. And like I said, I had a call here about, about two weeks ago, that some of the services that you all had done, it was really, I just committed you on the, not only the services, but the, I think, the personalities and the attitude. Everyone was really, really pleased with just the demeanor of the whole department. So thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Mr. Holder has a question, too.
Thank you. I know Mr. Farah is our official...
I know Mr. Farah is Iowa official rabies person, and I'd just like an update on rabies. We all see about rabid coons, coyotes, whatever, in various counties. We've seen it in the last several days. I'd just like a report so that, you know, the citizens can hear where we stand, and if there are certain areas in Henry County that we've obviously been hit with rabies this year, can you give us an update?
The recent activities in the surrounding counties in reference to the positive rabid animals that were reported prompted us to submit a summer advisory article, "Love your own, leave others alone." And I believe it is on the website, and it was in the Times. We just wanted to make sure that everybody had a knowledge of what to do, when to do. As far as Henry County, we've been fortunate this year. We've only had two positive cases so far. Last year, we had a record-
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Thirteen positives.
Positive rabies cases in this county. So, and all Henry County, so far, we're doing real well. We've had some numerous reports of possible animals acting erratically, but never, none of them ever panned out. They were all negative. So fortunately enough, in Henry County, we only had to hope we keep it that way, like the C zero, but we do what we can to, with what we got, to provide safety.
Well, I think one of our positives was in Locust Grove. It was a rabid fox, and the other one was a raccoon, and I'm not sure if I remember the location.
The raccoon and the dog, yeah. So far, it's only been animal, wild animal to domesticated animal.
Thank you. Thank you, V.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Moving on to our Building and Development Services. The first item is a public hearing, request to amend the erosion and sedimentation control ordinance in the Unified Land Development Code. Our presenter is George Patterson, Building Department, exhibit number eight. Good morning.
Morning, ma'am. Morning, Board. Last year, two thousand nine, the Board was, noticed that they had to adopt the two thousand nine Erosion Control Model Ordinance. We had twelve months to do that. The deadline for it is July first, twenty-ten. The last time the Board had adopted Erosion Control Model Ordinance was two thousand and Throughout that time, we had been receiving numerous updates from two thousand four up to two thousand nine, which was added into the ULDC during that timeframe. So we only have a few items that wasn't added in the ULDC, which we had probably about ninety-six percent of those items under the Erosion Control Model Ordinance that was actually in the ULDC. We have a couple items, such as the Erosion Control Maintenance Bond, which can go up to three thousand dollars, but we decided to adopt the thousand dollars because of the lack of development and construction within the county, which we only felt that was only right during this timeframe. But we do have the ability to raise that once development increases. We also adopted a fifty-foot state stream buffer, which the state only requires a twenty-five-foot We also adopted the Personal Involving in Land Development Design Plan Review Construction Monitoring and Certification, which is part of the Stakeholder Advisory Board, which requires anyone dealing with erosion control to be certified, either at the Level One, Level Two, Plan Review, and Design. Also, another adoption was less than an acre of disturbance, and that's not including subdivisions. Subdivisions will still be required the same as to issue, be issued a permit. And a couple of the changes were definitions like state waters and stabilization. Stabilization, it now talks about minimum seventy percent must be stabilized before that developer can initiate its notice of intent. I'm willing to take in the questions at this time.
All right, I know that we're looking at the Erosion and Sedimentation Control Ordinance in the ULDC, but the sedimentation, Soil Erosion Sedimentation and Pollution Ordinance, did you cover both of those, or are you just covering the first part of that?
I was covering both of them, ma'am.
Both of them at the same time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item?
Question, Madam Chair, and Mr. Patterson, this basically is a language cleanup and a definition of the existing terms, and to also get this language into the ULDC. Is that not correct?
It's basically a cleanup, but to remove it from the ULDC and put it into the Henry County Code, because we always constantly getting updates and changes.
And to clear up definitions. Clear up, clear the definition, to define, okay.
And this is, basically, both of these items are state mandated.
Yes, they're state mandated, and like I said, we received those in two thousand nine, and we had twelve months to make those amendments.
All right. Well, this is a public hearing, and so at this time, I would like to call for anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on either of these items. Let the record reflect that there is no one here to speak in regards to either of these items. And because these came to us as two separate things, we have two separate resolutions, so we'll look at the first one, which is a resolution to amend Section Eight of the ULDC in order to delete Section Eight, zero, five, zero, zero, Erosion and Sedimentation Control in its entirety. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Bowman? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Holder. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. The next resolution is going to be under item nine, and that resolution is to adopt the Henry County Soil Erosion Sedimentation and Pollution Control Ordinance, and this is as mandated by the state, and I will entertain a motion on that.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Bazler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stany. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Moving on to SPOS, we have a resolution requesting approval of a governmental encroachment agreement with Georgia Power for the new E nine-one operations center. Our presenter is Mr. Ron Burkhalter, Capital Projects Director, exhibit number ten. Good morning.
It's necessary to enter into a governmental encroachment agreement for easement between Henry County and Georgia Power for the new E nine-one-one center. The county attorney has reviewed the agreement and found no legal issues. There's no cost to Henry County involved in this agreement. The encroachment, this is Industrial Boulevard. This is going to be the new future E nine-one facility. As you can see, the Georgia Power, right away, is from this line to this line. What you see shaded in yellow is the construction that we're going to be doing within the easement. The restrictions in the easement basically are that we cannot build any structures in the easement, which we're not. It's for a road for access off of Industrial Boulevard and parking. There's a restriction on the height of landscaping that we can put into the easement, which we will adhere to, and the third agreement, part of the agreement, is that we have to give Georgia Power twenty-four-seven access through the easement, which we can do with the road and the parking lot that's there now. Any questions?
Are there any questions or comments pertaining to this item?
The existing easement, they have a hundred and forty feet.
Yes, sir. As you can see, Commissioner, the easement goes right up, right up to the building. In fact, we've had to modify, the entrance is actually on that side of the building. We're in the design phase right now. We've had to modify the awning, okay, to stay out of that easement.
Just playing the devil's advocate here for a minute, what would happen if you didn't do the agreement, agree to the agreement?
We couldn't use our property.
Okay.
And the intent of this, in our original, Chairman, in our original concept of what we're doing, we were going to use access through the Sheriff's Department, where the existing nine-one-one is now. We decided to put access off of Industrial Boulevard, two reasons. One, so the nine-one-one's not going through the jail complex, in case there's an incident at the jail, the jail's locked down for some reason, they wouldn't have any way of getting in and out. The other reason was, in this property, right here, is where we're looking at putting the new transit facility, so this easement is going to cover both.
Any other questions or comments?
This is actually a line that goes to the substation back over, off of Greenview Parkway, is it not?
Yes, sir.
That's why, that's why a high TV line requiring a hundred and forty-foot easement.
And also, there's actually two lines in there. There's a transmission line, and at the top of the page there, there's also a line in there that services the jail.
Got you. That's why it's so wide there.
Yes, sir. There's actually two separate lines.
But there is a transmission line that goes to the substation most likely. I bet that's where it goes.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have a resolution approving the governmental encroachment agreement between Henry County and Georgia Power, and I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Holder, is there a second? Second by Mr. Stany. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. And the final item under SPOS is a resolution requesting award of a bid to furnish and install athletic sports flooring at the Locust Grove Recreation Center, and that's going to be exhibit number eleven.
Seal bids were solicited to furnish and install athletic sports flooring at the existing Locust Grove Rec Center in Locust Grove. Eight bids were received and reviewed. Staff recommends the award to the low bidder of Atlantic Athletic Facilities Consulting in the amount of sixty-four thousand five hundred dollars, and the funding is available for this in the SPOS III Locust Grove Rec Center account.
Are there any questions or comments pertaining to this item? If not, you have before you a resolution awarding the bid, and I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the resolution.
Have a motion by Mr. Holder. Is there a second?
Second.
I think they're messing with you a little bit, Mr. Holder. We have a second by Mr. Bowman. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. That was all the whispering I heard before we came in here.
Madam Chair, I just want to make clarification. Is it south of McDonough?
I believe that's south of McDonough.
South of McDonough, and it'd be one of the prettiest floors in Henry County. Just wanted to make that.
All right, Mr. County Manager, do you have anything for public comment?
No, I do not.
Ms. County Attorney?
No, ma'am.
Did anybody sign up for public comment? The upcoming meetings and events, Monday, June fourteenth at nine a.m., and Tuesday, June fifteenth at six-thirty p.m., these are both regular board meetings. Monday, July fifth, all county offices will be closed in observance of the Independence Day holiday. Tuesday, July sixth at nine a.m., we have a regular board meeting. We have no need for an executive session this morning, so if there's no further business to come before this Board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Roark?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bazler. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. We stand adjourned.